Delayed her and wish her speedy recovery on behalf of the Board of Education and I'm sure staff. We wish her a speedy recovery. We look forward to seeing her back in the, uh, in the, uh, on the boardroom, in the boardroom. And we want to also thank the donor family, the donor and the donor family for their, uh, precious gift of life they provided to her. And we want to encourage everyone to consider being a donor because it is life-saving. Thank you. Uh, I would like to call, uh, a motion for adoption of the agenda. Director of Townsend.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Ms. Hicks, could you do roll call?
Ms. Berger?
Aye.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Kendrick? Wrights, Mr. Wrights?
Aye.
Ms. Hicks or Vival?
Uh, did everyone have a option to, opportunity to see the approval of the consent items and minutes? If, uh, if you have, we just need a motion to, uh, approve the minutes.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Director Wright?
Uh, make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
I second.
It's been moved in second. Um, need to do a roll call for that. Okay. Uh, the very ones in favor of the, no consent to, um, the minutes? It's been unanimous consent of approval of the minutes. We're gonna move to the pillar of the district and turn it over to Superintendent 4.1.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy New Year, everyone. Um, it is our new year in terms of, uh, school parlance. And I've got a number of, uh, comments and things that I'd like to share in a superintendent comment. First of all, let me, uh, most of you recognize that we've got our relentless shirts out there. For those of you who are not aware, that our theme this year is relentless. And we're relentlessly pursuing student achievement for our students, relentlessly pursuing student success for our staff and students. And we're relentless about supporting our board. Now, I wanted to kind of shift when I said board, that I want to kind of, um, thank the board because you know well with the last year, the board has had some challenges, but they've been relentless in finding success. And in our last few weeks, they came to resolution in order for us to start the year, uh, successfully. And we have, uh, a structure now, we have two co-presidents for a short period of time. And I have a quick presentation for our co-presidents, Ms. Hicks, if you don't mind. You know, the, uh, one of the things that we are, we talk about is, uh, collaboration and cohesive action towards success. And our board, um, in order to move forward, decided to, in this short period of time, do a collaborative approach with the two co-presidents. So, we, I'm presenting to our two co-presidents, Ms. Kendrick and Ms. Coleman. Dual gavels. There's a inscription on there that has, uh, co-presidents has their name and it also has the date. I'll tell you, this is precedent-setting. Never in the history of Missouri has any board had this leadership structure. And we're demonstrating that you can find success and find different ways to get to success. So, thank you both for being relentless and, uh, continued success for you both as co-presidents and to the board for their collaboration.
Well, thank you. That's very nice. Thank you.
I also want to, uh, say happy new year to our board members. We do have, uh, a little gift bag for you as well too, and you can receive that. And it has, uh, in there, there's, there's, there's one of my favorite, uh, authors, Malcolm Gladwell. It's a book, it's called The Tipping Point, right? And it has, talks about trends and talks about reaching a tipping point and what happens and what are the trends and things like that. And I thought it'd be appropriate for you to kind of take a look at it. There's some personal connections you can make and there's some also professional connections you can make too. And Malcolm Gladwell happens to be Canadian, so I'm a little bit biased. And I had his brother in one of my courses when I was, when I was, uh, instructing on, uh, becoming a principal and he was becoming a principal. So, that's, it has a unique connection for me as well too. So, I hope you enjoy it. Some of the research in there is a little bit dated, but it still applies to today. And, um, happy new year to our board.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson. Oh, we've got three Robinsons in the room. Uh, no, Justin Robinson. Do you want to queue up the, uh, did somebody click or I actually say, yeah, click the, the video. Let's start with the video first, actually, then we'll go to the. So, we, we had a great start to the, to the week. And, uh, I sent a message to our parents and our staff, kind of summarizing what I experienced through the week. And, uh, wanted to share that with the board and the audience and people out in the community as well too. So, go ahead and hit play.
What's going on in this superintendent day? This is for Estela Higman Mills. Superintendent O'Beam here, having a great start to this full year. And I want to share with you some of the things that I've experienced this first couple of days. From students arriving in the library, from teachers engaging in lessons, from principals leading and getting great customer service. You know what? Right in time. That means no. What you just saw, it's been a news. Let this be the theme this year. We saw students being relentless, but engaged in their new classrooms. We saw teachers being relentless, but finding success for their students. We saw our support staff being relentless about supporting our system. You know, the last few years I've been talking about the future, why? The future is now, because you witnessed what's happening in our schools. We've made many bold changes to move our school forward. And this is a great opportunity for me to thank you, the parents, because all the changes are on your backs. You supported us through challenges, through registration, through technology, and all the things that come with preparing your children for schools. So, I'm going to say thank you for the success we've had in our first few days. And thank our staff for being relentless as they continue to find success. Why, why, I think we don't see, hey, hey, ready to be with the best of the work here? Because I know the work you do is city, you're giving that, I'm a learning student, so that works.
My life is essentially being there.
All right, so there you have, that's just a snippet of the activities that were happening, uh, in the first, uh, couple of days. And, uh, I'll have, uh, we've had some really great responses in the first call. I think all the schools were in great shape. Uh, the teachers were there, ready to, to teach, students are ready to learn. And the support staff are there doing, fulfilling their roles as well too. Had great feedback from principals as well too. But also outsiders who had an opportunity to, uh, come into our schools, whether for registration or just dropping things off, really made comments about the deportment of our students and just the preparation for, uh, our schools. Last, Mr. Robinson, J. Robinson, Justin Robinson, we have two J. Robinsons, so can't even say J. Robinson. Uh, if you could share some of the, uh, external communication that we had there.
Mic check, mic, there we go. Love to hear my voice illuminated by a microphone. Okay, so what we have up on the screen right now is Superintendent O'Beam mentioned, uh, some of the outside response of people seeing what's going on in our school buildings. And we're just going to speak about what, uh, the mayor posted, uh, here just, uh, a couple of days ago. So, pay the teachers, pay the people. To the extent we find workforce crisis in any industry, there are really pay crises. Enjoy my visit this week with Dr. O'Beam, Superintendent of Hickman Mills Schools, who spoke of how the district worked to increase starting teachers' pay by 24.6%. The work of the superintendent, you, the board, and our Hickman Mills taxpayers in Southeast Kansas City has helped the district increase teacher numbers, satisfaction and performance. Gimmicks aren't how you do better. Respect of our teachers and staff. Proud to see it. I think there's a blurb at the bottom. Hickman Mills School District will soon have the highest teacher salaries. The raises paid for by tax levy approved in August, we will take the district from the lowest salaries in the metropolitan area to the highest. I think that speaks towards, uh, the mayor obviously has a eye on what's going on in the entire city. So, for him to say that about our school district and what we just did, and it's not just about schools, not comparing to other schools. He compared that to industry. He compared that to business. What you all did as a school board, first by, uh, going forward with the levy, then working to get the levy passed, and then approving the highest salaries in the area. Again, he said, if this is not about gimmicks, this is not about, you know, let's try this, let's try this. People want to know that they are respected and that their work is appreciated. And the main way you do that is by paying them the salaries that they deserve. And thank you for doing that for our school system.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Robinson and your department for, uh, the coverage of, um, this whole week. You know, we had an unprecedented, I think I did about three interviews on day two and two on day one, which is really unusual to think about how many schools there are in the area. And they came back to our buildings for different topics too. Wasn't the same topic, different things, and sort of profiling some of our, our principals and the work that was happening. So, kudos to our communications department for getting the word out about what's happening. And, uh, congratulations to everyone who supported and having that great start. But I think there's an opportunity there to acknowledge the work that the board has done in supporting the plans of staff and being able to, to implement it. And you've seen the fruits of those labors. With that, I'm going to give the first opportunity for our co-presidents to, uh, make their first comments before we move on to the rest of the agenda. So, I'm not sure who wants to go first.
I'd like to go first if I could, Ms. Coleman. First, I want, I want to thank Superintendent O'Beam for his dedication to the Hickman Mills School District. From the time that we both joined the, the Hickman Mills School Board, um, we went through COVID. And since then, I've seen so many wonderful changes here in, in the Hickman Mills School District. And that we're continuing to be relentless in, in the changing, the image of Hickman Mills and providing our students and teachers with the best they could possibly have and to provide them with the resources they need. And I want to also thank, uh, the new principals, the new principals we have, the new teachers, returning teachers, our paraprofessionals, our staff and support staff, our nurses, nurses and our custodial staff for their hard work. As we did review the, uh, view some of the, uh, changes in the school and they look wonderful. But I'm gonna let Ms. Coleman talk about that portion. But I just wanted to make sure that we thank the superintendent for all his hard work and being relentless in, uh, supporting the district and supporting the board, uh, to bring us to a, a point where we are co-presidents and to bring unity back to the board. And also, I want to, um, mention and congratulate Beth Berger, our board director, uh, for her achievement award for the eight sixteen community award, uh, for her dedication and her relentless dedication to the Hickman Mills School, Hickman Mills Community and the school district. And I would like to maybe take a little liberty to allow her to talk about her upcoming job fair, if that's okay with the board. Any objections to her talking about? Go ahead, Beth.
I'm happy to talk about the job fair.
Thank you, Ms. Berger. That was great.
The job fair is September the sixteenth, it's Saturday morning from nine thirty to noon. And some of the businesses that will be there are the Kansas City Police Department and Kansas City. They have openings in every department. Um, the U.S. Postal Service, Byron, they're coming for, um, carriers and inside work. Rising Construction Services, um, first student bus and many more. Um, we have over twenty businesses that are coming, but we also have community help organizations that are coming. The Metropolitan Community Colleges, the Goodwill Bots will be there. And, um, CAC will have the table set up, so if people need help getting identification, filling out job applications, you know, and stuff like that, CAC will be there to help them. So, we appreciate the district putting the, um, flyer on the, what is it called? Peach jar? Peach jar, so, um, it will be available to our community. Because the Hickman Mills Community is going to steal this word relentless. And we're going to be relentless in trying to improve the conditions of our community and the families in our community and help our students by helping the families.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I want to tell you that I am honored to be co-president with Director Kendricks. Um, and I have a lot of things that I want to accomplish, uh, just not in the short term that I'm co-president, but for the year. I went to Jefferson City last school year and I'm addicted. So, I want you to know that I'll be going to Jeff City and I'll be putting Hickman Mills first and our students. And I want to thank the teachers and staff of the Hickman Mills School District for being relentless, for being relentless in your sacrifice. Because as a educator, I know some mornings you don't feel like getting up and going to school. But you do because you do it for the students, because you're, um, relentless and you're dedicated. And you don't want to let the students down and they miss you. They miss you when you're not there. Believe it or not, they really do. So, um, I want to thank the teachers and staff for that. And, um, like I said, I have some things on my agenda this year. I want to be in the buildings with the students, um, visiting. I went to Truman this year for two days, Monday and Tuesday, for the opening and helped the students get off the bus and cheered them on. And just the looks on their faces was just priceless. Some of them were grinning from ear to ear. They were hugging everybody and that.
Those were the teachers.
That, 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 like I said, that was priceless and I really, really enjoyed it. So, I am honored to be, um, co-president this year. Thank you.
One more thing. I wanted to also, uh, just make a special shout-out to Casey for, uh, Clapmire for, uh, the best complication I've ever attended, ever. And, and all the staff that put it together. It was wonderful and it was, uh, wonderful to see the abundance of teachers there.
You make a good.
Mr. Robinson, can you, uh, come capture a photo of our two, uh, co-presidents up here?
Well, thank you. That was very nice. Okay, we're gonna move on to, um, uh, the pillar of District Two, uh, the, the sap, um, update from, uh, Facility and Bond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, uh, we've got a couple of items here, but the first item, if someone will click on, is, uh, we had a bond, uh, tour, uh, for board members for the 2020 bond. You know, we've been working on it. We just kind of wrapped up pretty much everything this last summer. And, uh, we had a couple of board members, um, through the last viewing. So, we've got a few slides and some summary and I wanted to invite them to kind of, um, share their thoughts on the, uh, on their tours and also to show some pictures. Are you there? I think Ms. Coleman's gonna start. Yeah, just slide up to the photos. Go ahead.
Okay, what we're seeing, you have a before picture and you have an after picture. And the first one is of the auditorium, am I correct?
Yep.
I, I can't see very well, but let me tell you, if you haven't been in there, it is gorgeous. It is amazing. The students are very proud of it. The staff is very proud of it. I'm very proud of it. It is, and the acoustics in there is wonderful. The second is a before and after of the cafeteria. Let me tell you, that cafeteria is state of the art. It makes me want to go in there and have lunch in there. It is, they have like a common area where the students can eat. They have little, um, like cafeteria seats. And then they have a seating area outside the cafeteria where, um, because sometimes noise in the cafeteria, students don't do well. And they may want to sit outside and enjoy a quiet lunch. So, there are seating areas outside the cafeteria where they can do that. Bathrooms, I think I talked about the bathrooms before. They are really, really, really nice. The walls are, are nice. Um, the fixtures in there are nice. It's, it's really nice. If you could have seen them before and see them now, you'd agree with me. The second is the gymnasium in the.
Got a renovation yet?
Yeah, they're nice too. They have, I think it's like six basketball courts in there. I think it's eight.
That was at Ruskin. That was at Ruskin.
The eight? Okay.
They have their floor done and the walls, you can see the walls are nicely painted.
And it's painted really.
Yeah, we want to thank the, uh, custodial staff especially because when we went into the schools, the floors were shining and you could see your reflection in it. So, we want to definitely thank this custodial staff and, um, and our construction company as well as our architects and, uh, uh, designing the, um, the new update features in our schools. Uh, especially, um, the Ruskin's football field, the Ruskin football field and the ticket stand is outstanding. Uh, it is beautiful there. Uh, the updated eagle in Ruskin High School. Um, and of course, all the facilities, the choir, uh, room as well as, uh, the band area as well for our students. Uh, the schools have really been updated and, uh, again, our staff, our construction company, our architects. We want to thank you for your relentless dedication and improving our schools, uh, and making sure that our students are welcome, welcome into a new, refreshed school, uh, to, uh, that's been improved. Uh, that gives our students a special leg up on education to have a beautiful facility to walk into every morning.
Schools look great inside and out. There's, most of the schools have a fresh coat of paint on the outside. The, um, um, bushes have all been trimmed up. There's grass everywhere. The sidewalks look good. The playgrounds are great. If you get a chance, if you haven't seen one of the schools, just drive by, you'll be amazed. There's a picture of the floors and they said, if you can see the light shining in it.
And they've done a good job.
Done a good job and we could see it. That's at Freedom Marsh that you can see.
Yeah.
You can look down and see your face.
Yeah, let me thank, uh, both board members. I know some of the board members wanted to come, but they're, you know, have other commitments. That it does mean a lot to our staff that you get a chance to appreciate the fine work. And this is the end of the project, right? Because along the journey, you've had an opportunity to see some of the other work that has been done. But this was the final of the 2020 bond as we, uh, wrapped up. And for those of you who want to see the beautiful new Ruskin Stadium and Field and everything, there's a game this Friday. Time's been changed because of the heat, but, uh, if you can bear the heat, then, uh, go out and cheer our kids on in the new facilities, a new media spot, everything. So, it's going to be look pretty cool. Um, thank you. Um, let me move on to the 2022 bond that we just passed. And, uh, Mr. Robinson, K. Robinson is going to lead us through that. Had some projects, uh, thanks. We've had some projects that are wrapping up, but we also have started some new projects that we're excited about. And we think they're going to add great value to the capacity of our district. And it takes a team effort. So, along with me tonight, we have, um, from our architectural firm, HTK, Mr. Gordon Kimball. And from our construction company, McCalleen Gordon, Mr. Michael Sims here with us this evening to talk about some of the ongoing projects that we have. As we continue to do this work, as we endeavor to make sure we are aligned to the goals of the district, we just want to remind you that these are connected to our pillar A and pillar B of our strategic improvement plan for our district and our schools. And within those two pillars, our finance and facilities, of course, we're talking about facilities and finance tonight to support those product, projects with the support of our board and the community, along with improving safety and the climate for our students so that our spaces are inviting spaces for our students to come to every day. And with that, we'll get into, I'll turn over to Gordon to start running through.
Next slide. Actually, I'm going to pass over to Michael for construction update. So, update for the construction budget, right now, we are at, we have two packages. Package one was the demo projects and then package two is the warehouse that is, uh, about to start up. Right now, we're a little bit over 5.7 million. Um, MWB participation on package two is over 25%. And some of the recent work is the ware, the warehouses at Ford GMP. Um, basically, we just kind of been in the permit process, but we are, um, anxious to mobilize and get started. Um, then upcoming work is going to be the real world, where the real world learning center. Um, that is drawings is going to be coming out in a couple of weeks, uh, maybe sooner. And then, uh, from there, we go ahead and bid it out and start the pre-construction process, basically. Oh, here's some pictures. Of course, I'm not sure how many have went past the schools lately, but it does not look like this anymore. Both properties have been fully demoed. So, Johnson, um, basically is just land. So, is Simonton and, uh, the stages we're in right now is kind of seeding and, um, just ready to turn it over. So, we're just waiting for grass and everything to take, just kind of see how that goes. But right now, the buildings are completely demoed.
Okay, on a more vertical note, uh, we've got some new things coming too. So, uh, we talked about district warehouse that's in the works. All those, um, drawings have been out. They've bid. Uh, we're in the permitting process right now, so that's, uh, taking a minute to get through the city permitting. Um, we had to get our, um, shop drawings. That's the middles for the middle building package. We've just got those recently, so that's gonna kind of really open us up to moving forward in the permitting process. So, that's a pretty new development. Excited about that. Uh, pretty soon, we're going to start to see, um, construction getting started. That's going to be coming up here in, in a few months. So, start to see some vertical things happening on that side. Get to see some dirt moving around, get to see some construction fencing going on. Uh, so looking forward to, uh, to that project being more visible in the community. Next slide. Uh, here's something that we've got cooking, uh, finishing design right now. So, we've got some really nice colorful images. We've been able to work closely with, um, staff here. And they've gotten some great feedback on really engaging spaces. Um, this is, uh, some few images of the lobby at the Real World Learning Center, um, previously the, the Pinnacle Building down the street. So, really recreating, re-envisioning that to be a learning and educational environment where, uh, kids can learn to engage in real world, um, activities and careers. So, engage in real world um activities and careers. So we're um approaching very closely to finishing those documents. Um, we have uh gone through a rezoning process. So that was another big uh check in the checkbox um to get through that and get in that rezone from a special um zone to into a more um uh accommodating zone where we can get our our school use uh approved. So uh that's looking good. Um, and finally, uh our Burke Elementary School project, re-envisioning that. Uh, we've gotten to work on some phasing. So kind of just going through the logistics of when we can um close down different wings during school to make a successful project to best utilize the time we have while keeping the building in use. So it would be an active school while there's also construction happening on site. So a lot of good coordination happening right now with McAllen Gordon and their team uh to make that a a successful project here. Um, design should be wrapping up towards uh the end of the year here and then getting on through the the bidding process. Next.
Uh, before you go on, the uh the uh Real World Learning Center, uh I love the color palette. Go back one more slide.
Yeah.
The color palette for that and everyone here is gonna get a discount at our cafe. So if you're here today, you get a discount.
First round's on superintendent, right?
Uh, yeah, it looks great. So that looks, that's good. But we're excited to uh look at that. And you can see the uh the boardroom at the bottom there, left hand corner. So they've uh engaged that to be a more multi-purpose room. So we can actually, so we don't have like pillars like this blocking people's view.
Yeah, pillar-free environment.
Pillar-free, yeah. And of course, the uh, the the board seating will be more um in a U, so you can see each other uh linear like this, right? So thank you for uh taking all those pieces in in consideration as you did that.
Absolutely. Happy to do so. Thank, run the next updates.
Just as we wrap up, as we've talked about, we'll continue to update you on these. Again, we're excited to being a a major part of the community. We're excited with the demo of the two vacant sites. We have one more site we're working on currently that will be demoed soon in the next couple of months. Um, but also with the new improvements that are happening. And we look forward to coming back to you next month with principal fields and some of the safety recommendations that we're doing at our high school to start. And then across the rest of our district. So we look forward to sharing some of those recommendations to make, not only improve our schools, but also make sure we're making safe environments for them as well. So we're excited to share some of those with you next month. And we also want to say thank you again for attending the bond tour, which you showed pictures of. Um, Ms. Director Coleman and Director Kendrick, thank you for being with us. And we invite our other directors to join us the next time we're out. So you can see some of the great work our team is doing on behalf of our community and students. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there?
Uh, yeah, of course. Uh, thank you, staff. Uh, any questions from board members?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Sure.
I would love to thank whoever came up with the idea of using the um driveways to make the concrete blocks. So people can't drive in the vacant lots and dump their trash. That will help keep the community clean and it was a great idea and it looks wonderful. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Oh, I wanted to know about the grant for the to help us with the safety.
Yes, we made our submission on August seventh, working with our district's grant writer. So we're um eagerly hopeful that we are going to be successful in this round. But yes, we submitted on August seventh for that grant. Yeah.
Show me the money.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you guys for your wonderful job and thank you for your relentless dedication. We're gonna move on to five point two. I believe this will be Shelley.
Yes. While Shelley's getting her glasses, so uh this month's update is uh Ms. Wilty will go through the normal uh financial updates, but there is also a uh separate piece. Which one are you doing first?
Um, I'll start with the surplus if you.
Okay, yeah, do the surplus, yeah. The surplus first. So they have to change that slide.
Should just be a spreadsheet.
Yeah. You want to explain a little bit why you're looking for the surplus, what the surplus is about and why we have to do this, the compliance and?
Surplus for the district, because we're a public entity, has to be approved by the board to be either discarded, given away, or sold. So what we're doing is we're going through and bringing all of these items to you for your approval. So we can look at the best way um to get them off the district property, basically. It'd be nice if we could sell them and make a little money on them. But if not, and then we can donate them to some other place that could utilize them. That would be wonderful as well. So.
So this process is really told to inform the board of the public dollars that were used to purchase these things, but that we've declared them surplus. So with your approval, that gives staff the opportunity to either donate them, sell them, or gift them.
Or discard them completely.
Them as well too, right? So this is what you're gonna see. So you want to share this, have an idea. Uh, I think it's the ba- last one. It says academic services, August surplus, that one, yeah.
So this one um comes from the academic services. It has textbooks and different items on there um that came from academic services. Uh, you've seen a few of these before. I did a few of them last year and I had them in the financial updates. But I'm gonna have a s- a separate motion for this as well. So I just wanted you to be aware of the different items that we're looking at um surplusing for this month. And I know that there'll be some more coming, so. Does anyone have any questions on this for me?
Yes, I I do have one, Shelley. So I see we have some uh extra laptops or computers. Uh, I wonder if they could be possibly donated to the welding school uh or um if they're definitely looking for computers or if they're usable for them.
If if they are usable, what we've done in the past, and I'd have to get with technology, but we've always wiped everything off before we've ever given them to any place. And so I don't know if that's something we can do here on site or if it's something we have to send out. But if they are usable, then I don't see why we couldn't donate them.
Is there any other questions regarding the surplus? And um, so just one other question. So once you um decide with each school, decide what they wanted to do with the any surplus they have, or is just the district makes that decision?
It's a district decision.
Yes, Director Berger.
I moved that we accept the list of the Hickman Mill School District Declaration of Surplus Property and the property disposal request as presented.
It's been moved in second. Six, could you call the row?
Ms. Berger?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Director Graves is absent. Pass five oh.
So now we'll move on to the fun part, the financial updates. Um, these are the original final numbers from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year where we ended that school year. So you've got the budget variance report. Can you make it just a a little bigger for me? Okay, so you'll see everything is in green. Um, we received in the majority of our revenues. And if you scroll down, you'll see that we had money left over in our expenditures. That's always good to see. So if you go to page two, at the top, you'll see we ended at a forty-six point, I can't see, point zero eight percent. So which is very.
It's wonderful, wonderful, wonderful.
It came in a little bit higher than projected, which means we have just a little bit more money to spend. And if you scroll down to the bottom one, um one, is there one more page? Okay, here we go. This is what I'm looking for, a little bit farther. I want this little box down here. Um, I need it a little bigger. I'm sorry. There we go. Okay, so you'll see that we ended the year with thirty-six million dollars in our general fund. Um, and a total of seventy-two million inclusive of debt service and capital.
Can you just, we just just show the board members, if you look at the columns, the general column, if you go right down to the bottom, there's the thirty-six billion, correct, Ms. Wilsey?
Yes, at the very bottom of that column.
To the total, you see the seventy-two uh billion.
Now, that is inclusive of bond dollars, but that is seventy-two million is what we have overall. At the end of the year.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Great job.
Do you have any questions for me regarding this?
Any recommendation?
Okay, I'm ready for recommendation to approve the um August twenty-twenty-three financial updates.
Right, if I can have a motion?
August twenty-twenty-three.
Second it.
It moved in second.
Ms. Berger?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Graves is absent. Pass five oh.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Um, moving.
That may be for Ms. Wilty. Uh, that's it for you, right? Uh, no.
No.
Not quite, but I want to thank.
One more.
You have one more thing to do, right?
Yes, yeah, we have the board budget.
Board budget. That's five point three.
Can you open up that that that's that slide deck? Five point three? Thank you. Nope, not that one.
Um. Five, three.
Five, three, to your left. To your left, to your left.
Okay. So this is what.
Let me do, let me do a little preamble for you, uh Ms. Wilty. So one of the things we struggled in the last uh couple of years around uh managing the board budget and we haven't had an opportunity to kind of go through the process the last several months. So Ms. Wilty and uh Ms. Hicks have been working with this and got, come up with some recommendations and also work with our co-presidents. And so she's gonna give you a quick analysis of what it looked like. And then we're gonna move to um where she's planning for uh for for this year's budget. And so there is an opportunity after that, in that discussion to speak with your co-presidents here and the rest of the board. And if there's anything else that needs to be added, then uh we can consider that for the bigger. But I really wanted her to to explain to you your budget and what was deficit in the past year and what were some of the challenges. So you know, um, going forward.
Okay, so if you'll see, um, I have um different years up here. So the very first year that you'll see, we had a budget of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The next year, we carried that a hundred and ten and we only spent ninety-six. In twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, we started with a hundred and thirty-one. And we ended up spending a hundred and eighty-five. Or that's where the budget ended up. I'm sorry, it was a hundred and eighty-five thousand. We would have spent that except that we received some money back from the Kansas City Election Board for the election. So, but we ended up spending a hundred and forty-six. Sorry, I can't, I wish this was a bigger screen. A hundred and forty-six thousand dollars um after budgeting for a hundred and thirty-one thousand. So what I've done for this year is.
Just, let's just pause it there. Just let's slow it down a bit. So that's where the challenge is, right? Like we overspent what was budgeted for.
Correct.
Not that we can't budget it for, but we need to make sure that we um have a budget that's in line with your spending your expenditures, right? So thank you for sharing that. So that's the last column. You're talking about one thirty-one and we spent one forty-six, correct?
And so it in for this school year, the twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, I'm going ahead and I'm budgeting for a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, which would cover the expenses from last year. So you'll see how I've put the money into those certain lines. So the first one, of course, is the election services. It always runs about sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars. So and you'll, as you'll see down across the board, I kept it in line with the expenses that were spent last year, which is the column next to it. So and at the bottom, I'm showing that we're budgeting fourteen thousand dollars more than what we did last year.
Fourteen-two-hundred, right?
Fourteen-two-hundred.
Right. So just to get a little bit more clarity on it, Ms. Hicks, can you look at the, just clarify in that middle twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, the past year, some of the challenges we had in the budget. So the board understands what we're doing to correct that for next year.
So the um
Yeah, the mic, what? Get it closer. Yeah, just get it closer. Yeah.
Okay, so the um information that you see here in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three column, um, the main thing that I want to point out here is that the budget overages that you're seeing in the red were largely due to the um additional election, of course, that we had, but also with travel. The columns that you're looking at are the cells that you see that are in yellow. Those are areas in which um we had to transfer funds between accounts to try to cover some of the overages in the expenditures that the board had. Uh, one of the other challenges that we had was uh board travel and conferences that were not um allocated into the budget beforehand, so that we could have those resources properly applied to those expenses. And so the goal for this year's uh board budget is to collaborate and communicate what conferences the board would like to attend. Uh, if there's any type of professional development, anything like that that requires uh travel registration, we want to make sure we include that in this year's budget and that those funds are um allocated properly so that we can um try not to go over budget or we won't go over budget because we've already accounted for those expenses.
Um, are there some points of conversation or information that you need from the board in order to execute this recommended budget? Cause I see, so let me just summarize. So Ms. Wilsey suggesting that she's gonna allocate an additional fourteen thousand to cover the uh budgets, but I think people need to understand the uh the blue column this year, because I think there's some 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 questions the board needs to kind of um address, right? So and if I look through it, the election stuff is okay, cause we deal with that. Uh, the travel piece, that really has to do with the conferences and things like that. And I think the board needs a space to figure out what's gonna be the protocol, uh which conferences you go to, how many board members are going and all that. And that'll help um us manage the budget better, right? It's not that we can't. Uh, we don't have, we have the dollars for it, but we just need to budget it appropriately. And then the other, the other piece would be around the um the uh memberships, which are, it's pretty clear, we should be clear on what what memberships do we belong to. And as long as we have the information, we can plan for it, right? So um you don't have to finalize it now, but that's probably something that you might want to um have more conversations around that. The recommended um proposal there from Ms. Wilty is after conversations with our co-presidents around the travel was the most complicated one. And they had, they had identified some significant uh conferences and things that the the board would be interested in and allocated how many board members. Now, the board has had some, they need to figure out how they're gonna select who gets to go to those conferences and things like that. I think you need to do that now. I just need to make sure that what you see right now is okay. So Ms. Wilty can put it into the budget and then next month, when she, when she comes back with the bigger budget, the big budget, this will be inside the big budget. You won't see this in this detail, but you know that, okay, everything is uh is covered, right? So um that's the kind of summary of it. And Ms. Wilsey's gonna go ahead with that, but I would just leave the floor open for any comments from board members uh before um she goes and executes that.
I got a question, I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Director.
Uh, you, you know, with us dropping out of the National School Board Association, how does, how does it, did that come out of the membership and dues? So.
That is correct. Um, so. So um in calculating the budget for the board dues and memberships, you are correct. As far as the N S B A membership, um, that membership has been removed out of the total calculations that I have uh going into this upcoming school year. That being said, one of the conferences that the board was uh expressing interest in was the N S B A Cube Conference, which has been um historically. was the NSBA Cube Conference, which has been historically a conference that the board has attended. They're very interested in, although we're not part of the NSBA as far as, you know, our, our district or in Missouri, we're not a part of that, but there are some benefits to that particular conference. So, what I'll do is I have some additional information that I will be providing to the board that will give you a more comprehensive itemized look at which memberships we currently do have, and if there are any other memberships that need to be considered, this is the time to make sure they're allocated within the new budget.
Director Berger?
Yes, would it also be possible to get an itemized list of what we spend purchase services? Where that budget is going?
Um, I can tell you, but I can also provide an itemized list, but it is.
Tell us, that'd be great.
Okay, um, it, your lobbyist comes out of there, and any consultant that you have brought in, so when you brought in MSBA, that, the bill for that consulting would come out of that.
Also retreats, any retreats that we bring and consult, any contracts that the board engages in would come out of that purchase services piece, right?
I, I have one question. I see on the Board of Education Training, what we spent for twenty twenty-three was like a fifteen thousand, uh, I have contacts on, so fifteen, I see fifteen, and then I see for twenty twenty-three, we spent twelve, and then what you're requesting is ten, so will we need to request more?
Well, well, essentially, that's, that's part of what that fourteen, that additional fourteen down at the bottom is inclusive of. So, you are correct, we are cutting back the budget as far as not just carrying over the exact figures from the previous budget year. What we did is we looked at each one of the conferences that were attended last year, and the expenses, we looked at the recommended number of people that you were interested in going to the conference versus the number of people that actually went last year. So, you're gonna see some differences in those dollars. We're trying to have a little bit of savings there if we can, but at the same time, we also want to make sure that in that fourteen thousand that we're looking at adding into the budget, that we're covering any other conferences that the board agrees to send representation to.
I think there's some clarification. So, under the, the budget education travel line, there's ten thousand dollars there. So, you're saying that ten thousand dollars will cover all the travel to all the conferences that board members are gonna go to, et cetera, et cetera. Ten thousand dollars.
With the, with the addition of the fourteen.
Oh, with the addition of the fourteen, so you would, so that number's gonna change then?
No.
Right, okay.
An opportunity to further discuss.
Sorry, so Shelley's saying no.
That's not true.
No.
What, what is in there is already fourteen thousand dollars over what was budgeted last year.
Right.
So, after the discussion we had about a a few board members going and not all the board members going, we had come upon the number of ten thousand. Now, with that hundred and forty-six thousand that's budgeted, that money can be moved around with inside of there if you need it to, if you're seeing that you're not spending as much in another place, and you're wanting to move something. But in the discussions that we had, we were looking at, we know how the board was possibly going to limit the number of people who are going to conferences, so that was the discussion, that was the reasoning behind the ten thousand.
Right. So, the, I, just, let me be clear again. So, I know the, the co-presidents got together and they had some recommendations around conferences. So, with that feedback, is the ten thousand enough to cover what they were asking for?
I think it is based on the conversations that we had.
Six? Because you have, you know, everyone's MSBA, you've got Cube, there's travel, is the calculation is done at ten thousand. If we could only spend ten thousand, we'd still meet the expectations of what they asked for.
Based on the other estimates that I've done, no.
Right.
They're gonna need a little bit more money, and some conferences cost more because you have your base registration, and then there are additional conferences that you can attend within the conference, and those have additional costs too. So, I think that they are gonna need.
So, it's probably gonna be more closer to that number that was last year, to fifteen thousand, than ten thousand, right? So, will that mean that you'll have to increase that one forty-six then, Ms. Wilsey?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Uh, Director Berger?
Yes, well, with thirty-five thousand in purchase services, and you said that that included the lobbyist, but that contract is coming up, and we will have to vote on whether we're renewing that contract.
Correct.
Right, so if we don't renew that contract, then a budget transfer could be made to the travel line.
Correct.
Okay, is the cooperating school districts?
It comes out.
Out of that as well?
It comes out of the memberships.
Out of memberships, okay, thank you very much.
Right, okay, so the only thing I see right now is for next month's budget, that that line needs to be changed to at least a fifteen thousand, right? Unless I'm hearing something different, I won't direct staff to do anything else.
No, that's, that's what my understanding that we, that ten thousand is not covering.
Election services is fine, yep.
Well, recommended.
Yep, and then we'll just, we'll just double check the dues and memberships. I think that's enough there, but we'll make sure that that's covered. And then the purchase services, so that's a line, if we take out fifteen, there'll be twenty less, so that the board will have to be judicious around who they contract for. Like, so if we're doing a retreat or whatever, you'll have to consider that we can't, you know, we can't bring somebody in for a hundred thousand dollars, right, which is my speaking fee usually. But, so you have to kind of keep that in mind when we do that. And that's what this conversation is really about, you know, so the board kind of understands that, so when you're making decisions about professional opportunities you have, you understand how much money you'll have to spend, and you'll have to say, well, maybe we won't do that one, or we'll do the one closer or whatever, and just get a better understanding of that, because we're fortunate enough to be in a situation that we do have dollars. If we were cutting right now, it'd be a different conversation, right? So, we just want to make sure that we're judicious and exercise good fiscal responsibility around this, so. Are there any other questions for staff on this? Okay, everyone's okay? I think that was the, the big thing was about the travel piece, so that's good. And, and Ms. Berger brought up these purchase services, so people understand that a little bit better. Okay, that's good. Okay, Ms. Wilsey, I guess you have your marching orders and.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Okay, we had the Board of Education.
It's Blattmeyer.
Blattmeyer, four point, five point four.
Yes, five point four. Good evening, Board. And, and let me start by saying that should I get a nomination for best host of a daytime event? I would appreciate your vote, so keep your eyes on the Emmys, right?
Tony Award.
I'm here tonight to present on MSBA Policy Updates, twenty twenty-three A and B. You may recall that these were presented to you for a first read back at the May twenty-fifth meeting. Our plan had been to re-present for second reading and final vote in June, because many of these were expected to be adopted by July one, based on statutes that were passed. I go, I mean, I know that you read through them when they were presented in May, but I'll go ahead and just hit some key ones, just so you're remember kind of what, what the key ones were. So, BDDB two, related to board agenda items. The change was made by MSBA related to the changes made to M six, those components that now deal with governance. So, that was made based on that. BDDH was made, changed, related to public comments based on a new state statute. And then I won't read all of the student ones that are the letter I, but all of those are related to new state statute that were passed when it comes to virtual education. You may have seen that on the news. It was a big topic, a big piece passed, so a multiple, a multitude of policies had to be updated, so that your board policies were in line with what the new state statute was, which basically is how we execute requests for virtual education. And then KC, Policy KC, reaffirms in writing, that was another piece that was triggered by state statute reaffirms in writing the board's commitment as far as the avenues that you solicit, public input, through surveys, meetings, et cetera, the things, we just had to have that in writing now according to the state law. So, the recommendation from the superintendent tonight is to approve board policy updates as presented this evening. Any questions?
If I can have a motion to accept the recommendation. Uh, Director Townsend?
I'm willing to be, uh, accept, approve the recommendations of board policies as consented.
Oh, second.
They're moving second. If there's no dissent, then, uh, they move by anonymous consent.
Thank you, Madam President.
Summer school report, summer school report. Yay!
I know, I have the rest of the night, right?
As long as, until the sun goes down. Until the night ends, five minutes from now.
Thank you for that. All right, I am excited to share the summer school highlights with you. As a reminder there, this is aligned to our CISA pillar around our schools and improving student success. I thought we'd start with by the numbers, so a little bit of data for you. We did have an increased enrollment over both June and July sessions from sixteen hundred and one students last summer to seventeen, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven students, and we really focused our enrollment on those students who were in need of additional literacy support. Eighty-nine percent average daily attendance. We saw some improvement in our, both our reading and our math post-test scores, so eighty percent of elementary students improved their reading post-test score after just the twenty days of summer school, and seventy-four percent of elementary school, of elementary students improved their math. We had seven hundred and four elementary students who went on at least one field trip, which was a huge milestone, and we're very proud of that. Eighty-three percent of our high school students completed and passed at least one credit, so these are credit recovery students in June and July, and then seventy-one percent of students during the July session, so that's just a half a day and it's virtual. So, that's why that number's just a little bit lower. We did have our highest middle school enrollment in three years with two hundred and twenty-four students, so that's always been kind of a hotspot, so we did some heavy recruiting there. And then of those middle school students, we had fifty-four students who were enrolled unvoluntarily. They were enrolled in summer school because they needed a little more support, or they were in danger of retention, and of those fifty-four, forty-five of them were able to successfully pass their classes, and so they got promoted then to the next grade. So, excited about what that data looks like. Some of you know some of the new stuff that we did with elementary this year, but I wanted to highlight it for everyone listening to the Zoom meeting tonight, and that is, we did overhaul and enhance our literacy curriculum, since that was a focus of students who were attending. We were able to bring on full-time literacy interventionists, so we could work some more small group with students who needed it. We used Greg Tang Math for the first time and had some good feedback from teachers about how it supports kind of that foundational fluency for kids. And then, brand new, all of our teachers in June got to choose their own enrichment theme. We had a list they could choose from, and they worked within their grade level, and varied from things like Caribbean and personal finance and fine arts. And what they did is they then got to identify field trips that aligned to those themes. So, this is a list of all the different field trips that kids went on over the summer months, over on the right-hand side. So, you can see it's extensive, everything from Biz Town to Jazz Museum, the Negro League Baseball Museum, Deanna Rose, et cetera, et cetera. For the first time ever in my eight years in the district, we offered a July in-person session for elementary-age students. It was ten days, it was ten days of a lot of really cool stuff. You'll see some feedback on the next slide that parents want it longer, but ten days was where we started. Students were in one of two themes, so they were either in performing arts and they put on the Lion King Musical, or they were in Steamtastic, and they got to work on project-based learning around supporting our community and learning about all those science and engineering standards. A few of the comments in our family survey, you can see here, he would love to participate, I would like to maybe see more options, maybe have it for three weeks. It's made an impact as a single mother, exceptional, safe and enjoyable place for kids. Having before and after-school care was a blessing, advancing the student's social skills, et cetera. So, some good, good positive feedback there. And then I really like, students could explore other options beyond traditional school. And then my team said I couldn't show you all five videos. No, I'm kidding, they didn't say that. We do have some videos here, I just want to show you a quick clip of a couple of them. Of course, I've gotta show the superintendent's clip. So, this is him interviewing one of our fourth and fifth graders who was over at Idea Space for two weeks. Their challenge was, on the first day's, no, I'm sorry. On the second day of summer school, they got on a school bus and they toured the Higgins Mills Community, and they identified places where they would like to build a kid-friendly playground for the community. And so, they took pictures of that, they then went and visited all the different parks in the area to pick out the pieces of the park they liked the best, and then they got to design it for two weeks.
Great, you had a great time, James.
Yes.
That's, someone will be mad.
I learned about program programming, because this is my first time in here. First time ever being here, and so with my first learning program, programming stuff.
Uh, and then I gotta show a little sneak peek of the Lion King Musical. Look at all those families. Trying to get to a speaking part for you. Those are kindergarten and first graders. All right, so you see K one did mostly just singing and dancing, but then second through fifth grade actually had parts assigned to them and did all the choreography. They did all of the set building, they did all of their own costumes, all led under the direction of our Ruskin Theater teacher. He had four student interns who had a paid internship this summer from Ruskin who helped direct it, and we had six elementary teachers who stepped up and did fine arts, even if they had never done it before, and they did awesome.
That was less than two weeks, right?
Ten days.
They had to do that production, that was for you.
And the last snippet, I promise, I wanted you to hear a student voice. The fourth graders at Dobbs chose to do personal finance, financial literacy as their enrichment theme, so they went and visited the Biz Town Junior Achievement and learned a little bit, so they did some interviews. Yeah. You know, those hard lessons learned early. All right, and then to finish up, we, as you also know, in conjunction with summer school, we ran Ingles, launched their extended calendar this summer, so they kicked off their brand-new school year on June the twelfth, and they have embarked on this new journey called World of Work, and so students in each grade level will explore eight different careers per year. So, you have some pictures here of the refreshed Ingles Elementary. If you walk in there, you'll see all of these references to RIASEC and different career fields, and really helping kids learn more about what they're interested in and what their strengths are. On the right-hand side are some pictures of some of their career days based on their themes. So, I do have to point out this one right here, this little guy with the welding helmet on. One of our proud welding graduates from the program came back as a guest speaker in the second-grade classroom to tell them about what it means to work in trades and how they can explore that opportunity. Lastly, what we're all here for at the end of the day, once they grow up, our summer commencement, thanks to board members who were there in person or cheering behind the scenes. Super excited that these young people persevered to finish up that diploma. That's all.
The class that our attorney, Carla Fields.
Yes. That was part of Ingles World of Work. The fourth graders, you had fourth graders, were learning about legal.
Did you hear your voice? Okay. Uh glad to hear about it, um they had good tapes they put on their own mock trial. Um so they were every um they tell the board that every aspect in the courtroom from um the judge to the office being heard and then trying to the bailiff, um the juror, and so um their trial was a um about a dis- and um it's a trial that you had to adjourn at the river, so they had a wonderful time, they had a wonderful time.
And they didn't have a very long time to do that on.
They got it together in a couple of days, I went out there, morning sessions, and met them, they went over their parts and had some basic questions.
I think the person was found innocent too, wasn't it?
They were. All of that is real-world learning in K five. Not just high school.
Excellent.
Thank you. Did anyone else have any questions?
Uh let me thank um Ms. Rowe and the academic services team, you know, last year we started embarking on a journey to change the paradigm of summer school, and so our summer school looks very different, it's not just in classrooms, there's lots of enrichment, there's theater, there's all kinds of different things, we have virtual options, and so what I saw this summer was kids really engaging and enjoying being in summer school. And that's how you get the love of learning, right, once you start to enjoy those pieces, so thank you uh Ms. Rowe and your team for um spearheading that, and uh next year it can be even bigger and better.
Yes, and then just a testimony from a parent here. I truly enjoyed both sessions. Uh I truly enjoyed, but my kids, they came home and actually said they loved summer school, and they was excited for summer school, and they enjoyed it, so great job.
We're gonna move on to uh seven point one, which is our board vacancy.
Uh no, not that document. Can you uh can you open the other, the other document, actually?
Yeah, this is the board vacancy process, so uh at our last meeting, the board um decided to go ahead and do a board vacancy. And the other document that's attached to this in this process is the the board policy. Um staff have outlined a recommended process for the board, and for today, the board will kind of liberate over this and make some decisions around um what needs to happen, so if I start from the category, this is taken directly from the policy. Uh the background reference, on April eighteen, the board vacancy was presented, so that's part of the policy to present it. Um on August twenty-fourth, the board approved um to have a board vacancy process. And so here we are. Now, first part of that process is notification of process. So we've outlined what we like to do for notification, so right now we're following the policy, letter of the law, up to the four weeks. But you also have the opportunity to look at, uh we want to put some communication out in multiple languages. Uh post to district website, post to social media, notify local media, and email distributions, right? Uh the next part of the policy talks about the review and interview process. Um the board uh had a conversation at the last meeting with some selected areas around selection criteria, and we're gonna get a chance to go through a dot-mocracy process to finalize that uh today, August twenty-fourth, and then um qualify applicants uh forward to board review, so we'll be able to post after the board approves this. And then we can send the applications in October fifth. Um if uh the board follows the line, then it's a special meeting to interview candidates. And then a selection process by the twentieth, board finalize the recommendation. And then there's a swearing-in on the October uh board meeting, and then you'll have your additional board member. So that is the um process as outlined in the uh policy. Um I would, I don't know which one to do first, do you want us to do the selection criteria and then come back to the the entire process for the approval, or do you want to talk about some of the elements in this first?
I um have an issue with uh the duration.
Right, so you want to do that part first, when I go look at the process first, or you want me to do the uh selection criteria and then come back to the do the selection and then come back? Okay, so let's do the selection, then we'll come back to the whole process, and then you can look at any changes, because that's where the recommendation is gonna come from the board, so if you want to make uh changes to this document, then we'll do that. So um Ms. Hicks is going to assist me, and we're gonna do this, uh those teachers out there will enjoy this, we'll do this sort of workshop style, we're gonna get up a little bit, and uh
hope you can hear me back there. But at the last board meeting, um one of the things we talked about is having the board have a little bit of uh selection part here to consider as you go through the process, so the octagonal process, the process, and talking selection. So there has to be some sense about what are you looking for, so the legitimacy from uh everyone. And uh you captured what you guys said, I'm gonna read them. Right, and then see if you go on and keep saying ones, or further discussion, or add something, leave something, then we'll go through that. So uh one of the uh areas that the um and this kind of works.
Can we bring it a little forward?
It's in your case.
Oh, is it?
Sports throw, personal district. Okay, doing support division, mission of the district and board. Reading, uh Walter Maple. Top nineteen years. For remonstrates, gone period, for the community, from which encourages collaboration among peers. Foundation supports kids. Perhaps some prior public or private board service. Building to guide for all being here. So that's a focus, particularly to make sure we have an understanding. And we're gonna narrow it down to that of mine. Is there any questions for clarification?
So, we're we're doing selection criteria for the purpose of, because for with me uh experience, I mean, we're gonna be doing this what, six months into a year term? So for me, experience is way up here. And everything else is way down here. So how does, you know, I mean, experience is like one hundred if it was weighted, and everything else is like under ten. So. So that's, that's why, so that's why I'm trying.
This is, this is what we crystallized the conversation.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have a conversation. So I don't know if we see experience in here, so prior public or private board service, I would see it there.
Yeah, so you would put your dot there, so that's your priority there.
No, I'm just, I'm just giving more clarification, we'll go through the dot office. People understand here, but that's a really good gap, because you want to see where it's experienced, and I can see experience maybe being here. Right, in that area, prior public, private, important, important service, right? Well, that's where there are other areas of clarification. There's something that we're missing, you want to add, I think it's pretty comprehensive.
I think it's
You know. I hate to be Debbie Downer. But uh it was clear that the public wanted us to do it the way we've always done it. We've had newspaper articles written about it, we had people running out of meetings. And now we're doing something different than what everyone has asked for us to do. So I I'm just wondering if this was such an, if it was such so important that we do it the way we've always done it, why are we changing it?
We're following the policy.
They're the policy.
I I haven't, I haven't seen that in the policy, the only, I I read it, I read it, and the only thing that there's a variation on is is if we decide to interview or not. And it's
You get a chance to hold on the process, you can decide and take not take out a whole section of this process, but we laid out a process based on the policy, that this is what you should do specifically. And I know from every interview process that I've done, thousands. If you're doing a committee, like any, there should be some conversation as a group, what is it we're looking for. At the end of the day, you get to vote yourself what you want. But if you have some conversation, you get a chance to hear what people are thinking, and you're gonna get a chance to take it. And once again, these are, these, these are considerations, right? Considerations, but we know that everyone's gonna, and you start to propose that, you would get people, people are gonna vote uh based on their own feeling, right? We're hoping these conversations helps everyone kind of get an understanding in terms of, okay, what's our needs, and what we need to uh select to join the board. So it's a process, right? So one thing is not gonna decide.
And and just to interject, you know, it was some board members took issue to the way the previous, it has been previously done. So we want to follow the policy according to
Okay, but we're not following the policy, there's nothing in the policy that says you do a dot democracy.
What the democracy is for what we pick for our criteria, what we suggested that we wanted.
Board policy doesn't say create a criteria. Yeah, we could just pull the board policy up and read it.
This is the conversation part. Side of what they want to do, and you do, you can vote that, people are gonna get to vote on what they want. But this is the process, they get the board talking about what are they looking for, and I think that's important, to have a conversation. Disagreements is good, but we need to know what people are thinking, but then at the end of the day, you're gonna choose what you this selection part here is only to generate
Conversation.
Thoughts, and I'll conversation about what kind of person, right, so it's a consideration, but at the end of the day, when you make your vote and decide on who you're gonna pick, someone's gonna say, well, this, this is people to vote. Even if it doesn't match, but they can get the vote.
Right.
On the day, right, but this is for the conversation to kind of get some conscious around what are you looking for, so this is, this is based on what you said in the last meeting. So it's not something that we made up, it's what you said, that's why I ask, is it clear, want to add anything else, what, right?
I, the only thing I was trying to make clear is, this is not in the policy, but this is what we're doing to generate conversation.
Right, right. But part of the review and the process in the policy session, the board can choose to say, oh, we didn't have a committee, they're gonna just select. Or you can do different ways, right? We're going through this, we're having a conversation, so people kind of understand what it is, and then you get a chance to choose. Well, what we're gonna do, in order to narrow it down a little bit, uh Ms. Hicks is giving you four dots.
Yes.
Correct. And um we want to see, based on what's up here, what's what's most important. That takes you out another lens, in terms of what are your colleagues think, right? You know, I've been in these situations where I might be the only one that picks something, everybody else thinks that's really important, everybody else thinks that, okay? At some point, you have to make a decision. Take or take your vote. So um I'm gonna, we're gonna do this on a time, it's gonna start in twenty-five. Alright, so if there's one at their, somewhere city green dot.
We have eight dots.
Right, start with the greens. Yeah, so use a green dot, uh you're gonna get up here, you're gonna, you're gonna dot by uh your four most top priorities. Right, and hopefully we'll see a cluster, then you can have a conversation after that.
So we're doing four?
You got four dots, you can pick any four you want.
Okay.
Yes, we are going.
Give everyone a chance to vote and review it, I'll read it again. Hold the timer, we can go, support this, support the district, support vision, the mission of the district board. Multi-dickle top branch of district, demonstrates volunteerism, encourages collaboration among peers, um patient, supports kids. Prior public, private board services, mostly one for three uh three-year term. This is, are you ready?
One minute.
Let's give it a uh, people are looking right now, so it's about thirty seconds.
I think Byron's ready. He's ready. Ready?
Ready? Okay, still. Everyone, yes.
Green is your top priority.
You gotta put your green dot next to the four that you feel are most important to you. Will you need, will you just make? Time.
Race over. Race over.
Give you another thirty seconds.
Race over, I won.
Ten seconds. Five seconds.
Make a motion, she must have finished her.
And she puts two on the same. After she did that.
Green dot, so you can see what was most important out of this bit. So looks like number four was most important. Number four, she kind of tied for uh fifty demonstrated volunteers, what it's about. Looking for that, uh number two, the fourth vision, the mission of this before. I just think that it was kind of in that support that. Then coming in
Three.
Three.
And seven.
Multi-dring ball of languages.
But I think Irene put two on number two.
And seven.
Then we have uh prior public, private. Encourage collaboration among peers. For those who look, look at the down, that just gives you an idea of where people thought was important, I I think it's true, very critical, because there's a big time. Support the vision, support and um someone that demonstrates volunteer. So when you get to your, you think you can be back on this, know that the colleagues are looking at these the top things for what
So we go to the uh the process, so here's where, before you make your
So we go to the, the process. So here's where, before you make your recommendation to. For your process. Can you spell up this a little bit, make sure I don't miss anything? The top there, who's running the. Okay, no, that's good. Okay, we did the first part. Notification. Is everyone, is there any changes you want in notification process?
I know. We were trying to shorten it, but we, but Ms. Berger did come up with. In a side meeting, Ms. Berger did come up with a. Situation. How, how are we? How the timing situation, can we, based on the publications, can we drop a week off of that?
You're trying, you're, so your recommendation is to just do three weeks instead of four weeks?
Yeah, I don't think we need to do four weeks. Policy says two to four. I'm saying anywhere between two and three.
But it depends on how, so it depends on how, what's it called?
When the papers publish. Publications or newspapers, because they all go out at different times.
Right, last time that this happened, it came out in the Martin City Telegraph, the same day that the application was due. And that is just not enough time.
Some more to see the telegraph.
So, okay, so I'm hearing, I'm hearing right now, I've seen a recommendation of three weeks. Yes, the challenge may be getting it because you, you do want it posted in the local papers, right?
Yeah.
So that might be the only time. I'm not sure what there, if it, if. Four weeks, you know, we'll get it in there. Three weeks, probably you can get in there, but it might be close.
And four weeks might give Ms. Grace time enough to be back on the board or at least be on Zoom or. Something to that effect where she can weigh in on the process.
Does anybody know when the Kansas City call, when the Hispanic newspapers come out?
They're weekly.
They come out weekly.
They're weekly.
Yeah, this is a weekly.
So come out. We missed a week already, so. Yeah, we have to consider that too, so.
Get it out as soon as possible. How could we just do up, up to four weeks depending on the publications or, or how we can get it out so at least. The last week that it's been encircled in all papers.
So, I guess.
What if we did this?
I'd like to do a motion.
I, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta suggest that you can make a motion for it. So if you direct staff to. Try to be expedient as possible. We will go, we will try to get it for the three weeks. Right? And get it out there. But the board certainly has the prerogative to extend it if, if we have to. Right? So we can work for three weeks, but if, if we find that, okay, well, it's not going to be posted till then, then you extend it.
Okay, I make that motion that you just said.
Up to.
Okay, amend it, amend it to three weeks? Okay.
Yeah, amend it to three weeks with a possibility of extension. For one extra week if it can't be. Published timely.
Okay, any other considerations for notification process?
Well, I would like to know when it comes out in the publication. Personally, so if we could get something, you know, by email with the publication dates.
Right, you want us to notify us when it's coming out?
Of the board, uh huh, thank you.
If we could also, sorry, if we could also make sure that this is communicated out to the district, including like PTOs and things like that, people who are already involved with the district parents, things like that. That could be good to get some more involvement here.
He's, he, uh, the, the director Wright said if he could distribute it to like PTAs and PTOs. So parents who are in the district can get access to it as well.
Yeah, it has to be posted in, in the buildings too.
It should be.
Like posting the buildings? Yeah, we could post it. I'm here and post, are you capturing this, Ms. Hicks? Yeah, we can post it in our buildings, for sure. Not if you want to do it, not if you want to do it in three weeks.
We're just talking about budget right there. I mean, come on.
Well, more is the timeline. You got to get both on board. All right, all right. Anything else for the notification process? Yeah, okay. All right, all right, we got that. Okay, so now that. I don't know if that had, that might have an impact on the interview process, so. We've done the, the criteria piece. Monday, September twenty fourth, qualify applicants forward to board for review. I think we can still leave that. If we have to, if we get it sooner, then we'd, it'd be a week sooner, correct? And then October fifth is special meeting to interview candidates. Any? Suggestions for their interview process?
It is closed, right?
It is what?
The interview is closed, but the discussion, but the discussion is.
You can do the interview public, yeah. Yeah, because it's not, it's not personnel.
I think it did say.
It's not in the policy. I know that because we looked at that. It's not.
Did we check on it? Because it, it seems like they've always done it.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean it was correct though.
Yeah, like I said.
You just went, yeah. I, I think it has to be a public process.
I, I, I know the, like I said, I know the discussion on whether, on who you want. And why you want them is a public.
Well, I'm going to, we'll, we'll have to.
If you do, if you do a public interview, the first candidate is going to get the questions. And the candidates two through fifty five are already going to know what the questions are. So it's kind of creates a.
No, they won't because we interviewed them individually. So they're not, they're not all in the room at the same time.
Yeah, but somebody can, if it's, if it's a public. If it's a public interview, someone else in the public could say, hey, Johnny, these are the questions.
No, not if Johnny's in our room over here in the green room.
So you're going to take their phones and stuff like that.
I mean, I mean, I'm just trying. Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying there are ways we could do a public process and keep it clean without them having access to, if we want to do that. Your deliberation piece is the bigger question.
That, no, that's definitely it. That's definitely.
And I will turn to our, our lawyer to, uh, talk about that. Has to be a public process. Yeah. Okay, so it's an open meeting, yeah, so.
Is there a definition of qualified applicants?
Yes, there is. It's in the other document, Ms. Hicks S S posted. I think they have it.
Okay, it's a required qualification.
Yeah, the required public. That'll be in the, the vacancy posting too, right? Yeah. That's, no, it's a good question for people to kind of hear that too. Anything else around their interview process? Okay, seeing none, just move to the selection.
Oh, yeah, we should.
Oh, about the three weeks?
Yeah.
Well, I thought we dealt with that already. Why don't we do it all at once? Capture that and we can do one to, that with the amendment, right? So let's do that all at once, otherwise. Selection process, so. Oh, I, I know we, we, no one's, no one had any dissent around the special meeting. Is that what you want to do? Is a special meeting? On the October fifth? It looks like that's what you want to do? Yes, okay. All right, and then the selection process. So if you have the special meeting, you might be able to actually get it done then. And not have to have, but we'll keep the October twelfth as another emergency date in case you want to come back. Do something. All right, and then the swearing in on the, at the. So you'll communicate to the candidate to come to be sworn in and we'll be able to move forward. Okay. So seeing that, then I think there can be a recommendation to. Support the vacancy process with the amendment of. The three week duration with a possible extension if needed. Okay, was that correct, Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Okay, so someone needs to make that.
Seconded.
Yeah, Mr. Townsend moved it. Okay, second, you want to roll call vote on that?
Mr. Townsend? Mr. Wright?
Hi.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Ms. Berger?
Aye.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Graves, accent, has five votes.
Here, there you go. Okay, so we'll get started right away and we will inform the board of our steps when we find out about the. The mailers, the, the newspapers, publications, and the date is actually officially posted. And we'll follow this as closely as possible. All right, there's also the translation that needs to happen too, so.
Yeah, yes.
So that, so all that, so please give us some allowance around that because some of that stuff might take a couple more days.
Yep, I'm sure we have students that can help translate.
Yeah, we are translators.
Translators, okay.
All right, uh, over to you.
Okay, we're moving on to, is there any, our community communications from?
I don't think Ms. Hicks received anything.
I'm sorry. The board vacancy is a.
Posting example.
I think there's an example there of the board vacancy posting and what that would look like.
Do you want to see that?
I did see it. I had, I had sent Ms. Hicks a question about the order of the board. Of directors.
Okay.
Anne Coleman and Irene Kendrick are co-president. Yes, they.
Can you open that up?
Start to lift. Go on down. Keep going. Right there. Whoop, go back up. Up, up. Right there.
Okay.
Yeah. So shouldn't that start out with Anne Coleman, co-president, Irene Kendrick, co-president, and then list the remaining directors?
Sure.
Yeah.
Ms. Hicks can make that change, right? Okay, excellent.
And that, and will we give and have a copy of that letter? I guess.
Yeah, we're going to send you the package once it's all done. Yeah, yeah, you got the, all right. So you want to go into closed session?
Okay. Since, since there is no communications for audience comments, we would like to recess the open session and, and we will be going into closed session. If there's any, any business that need to be addressed at the end of closed session, we will come back into open and make an announcement. But at this time, I don't believe so there will be any additional comments. So this would be recess of our open session and we're going to go into close.
I'm over. We go into closed session. We're going to six one oh. Point oh two one.